Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mr. Heaton?
Here.
Mayor Stanfield?
Here. Andrew, you want to bring up High Street? Since we discussed it in workshop. Jim? Is that Dr. Jim?
Talking about over there where Mr. Moll's been looking. We go on the road?
Yeah, we're buying stuff up here. You want to address that, Jim? Over on High Street?
Yeah, on High Street, if we widen the street, it's about 450 feet long. Widen it by 12 feet. Then actually widen it, take five or six feet off of the lower side where it keeps falling out from under. That would shift the traffic back over. We're looking at 15 to 17,000. Gravel asphalt curb on one side, curb on the lower side. The upper side would have a ditch, so it wouldn't need curb up there.
And you don't have any of that money in your budget?
No.
Can you do it?
Yep.
The price that you just gave us, is that the price that you can do it for?
Yeah.
It's not a contractor's price?
Right.
Have you got a contractor's price?
No.
Could you?
I wasn't asking to get a contractor's price. Just get a price for the material, us do the grade work in-house. Of course, we'd have to get somebody with asphalt and the curb, which is rocker through. So 17,000 should cover it good.
Jim, who exactly is that? Is that right there close to the church at High Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, it actually goes up beside the church at High Street. Goes all the way top of the hill.
There's a little hill there.
It goes all the way top of the hill. You know, it had trouble, it's been falling in above the church. And this would... There at the church, it would scoot it back a little ways away from it. Probably three to four feet. Because you have to transition back in. You wouldn't get the full five or six foot movement over that you'd get on top of the hill. But by the time you transition back in to tie in 15th Street, you'd still get three to four feet away from the back or the side of the church where we've had problems before.
Well, let me ask you this, Jim. Do you think that you can do it cheaper than a contractor can do it?
I can get a price. I don't know.
Okay, let me ask you another question. Do you have the time, if you had the money?
Yeah, you're not talking about our car being a great big project. The biggest thing going there, cutting the dirt out back on the upper side, and just loading, dumping over the hill back over there.
But now, are you talking about... I don't know if you got... What are you going to load with that truck? With a backhoe?
Yep.
Lord have mercy, you'll be a bar of muck. But if you're running out with a loader, or a trackhoe, loading all out, and wouldn't it be about five times as fast?
It'd be faster definitely, yeah.
Yeah?
But you know, I was trying to...
It'd be more expensive.
I was trying to do it as cheap, out-of-pocket expenses as I could. You know, save rent or hiring somebody with a trackhoe coming there and do it. Now, we're doing it the way you...
No, not a backhoe?
A trackhoe.
Yeah, okay, okay. Because you're talking the difference between a wheelbarrow load and a truckload?
Yeah.
When you're talking tractor. You do it with your backhoe, it's about a wheelbarrow load at a time?
It's a load, it's a...
Yeah.
But...
I was... In my opinion, I'd say that it's got to be done. But I'd just let Jim give him the okay to go ahead and... In the meantime, I would get a price, Jim, from somebody to give me a ballpark figure if I was even in the ballpark or not.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be a smart thing to do?
I do though. I can rent a 325 trackhoe with operator for $120 a ton. I did find that out a while ago. That's a trackhoe, 325, pretty big machine. And he can go in there and cut it out pretty quick. And then we can start loading, loading fire grates, loading the back...
That'd be a smart thing to do. Maybe if we end up in helping with this other job, that we might be able to...
Work them together.
Yeah, put them in together and have you able to...
There would be a little bit of trucking involved down on the lower end of High Street. But we could do a lot of little trucking with our two little trucks, you know?
Yeah.
Just short distance right there.
Right. What was the price, Jim, on that trackhoe in there? What was that?
Or...
What was the price of that trackhoe in there?
$1.20 an hour.
For a trackhoe and operator?
Right.
All that Jim needs is an okay from this council to proceed with some of the things y'all have said. And then Terry needs to be able to say, "Word, we will come up with 17,500 or whatever." If it's 15,500 or whatever. But when we leave your jury, Terry, first thing he'll ask me, "How do I pay for this?" And I guess you would need to give him permission to do that job and tell Terry where you want to take the money out of. If we only have two places we can take it out of. Yeah, we'll take it from one of them two places. Tell him which one. You tell us how much we've got in each place.
Well, you've got some capital outlay funds, but if you're going to rent a trackhoe, that doesn't apply to it. So I would suggest you take it out of the community service funds.
Yeah, but you're not just talking about backhoe on 17,000. You're talking... You're talking about gravel and...
You're looking at... But what Terry's saying, you can't take equipment rent out of capital outlay money. Now, you could fund possibly the gravel asphalt.
Well, when you all... See, I'm trying to determine on capital outlay, you know, how much money we got. When we mixed buying that equipment in with that STP project and they left out the match on it, that's what I'm trying to determine. I don't know exactly how much money we've got in capital outlay. I've been working on it, but I'm not getting finished yet.
Okay. So I think you're looking probably 25 to rent a trackhoe and do the work, you know? The major work. Then we go in there and dress it up, trim it up, load the bike and all that.
Okay, if you can't take... If you can't use that money for the trackhoe?
Yeah.
Okay, let's turn around and if we want to have to use this from the other fund?
Right.
Then let's use what we can out of the fund that we can get that money out of and then take the rest of it out of the fund on the other end. And it's going to make a bit of difference. You're just taking... Instead of taking... You're going to spend the same amount of money, but you're doing it the way Terry wants it done or the way they require it done.
Yeah.
And then you turn that around, take it out of your other money for that. And you're at the same time.
You're looking at the total dollar.
Yeah.
And this depends on where Terry can take it from. Right?
Sure.
Okay.
But it is a fact, we're going to have to do something about that.
It is.
Sooner or later.
I was with the city 30-some years and when I was a kid, I played over in there. Never have I seen that thing. About the hard rain we had in 45 years since I played over there, never seen that thing slide. It's got bad, it's got worse rain standing. I would never dream it would come out like that. Especially against that churchy wall. We were lucky there. We're fixing a lot of problems that have just been patched before.
Right.
That's what's happening. It's come to the point where you can't do that no more and now we're going to have to face it. Terry, what would be your recommendation on where the money comes from?
I'd take it out of the community service funds because if you're doing a project and I have to track it, it's better to have it out of one fund than try to split it out into... And the second thing is, if you're building a road, for example, a new road, that's like a fixed asset. If you're repairing one of my years, that's repairs. I'm not too sure about, you know...
Right.
I know we take pavement out of it, but you know, as far as...
That's a little bit different, yeah.
Jim, you and Terry have worked it out.
Okay.
We'll work it out.
I'll make that a motion that Jim and Terry works it out and take it out of the problem.
Have a motion, have a second.
And in other words, let Jim decide how he wants to do it?
Yeah.
I mean, if he needs to rent a backhoe and the operator, let him do that. But if you don't need to, he can do it with his own men?
Yeah, that's...
We should leave it up to Jim anyway.
That's a big issue. Our biggest priority remains, Terry.
Right.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll say it.
Have a second, I'll go.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mr. Heaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Kate, you want to go ahead and read her the bridge?
Yeah, you... Again, I guess this being primarily called in session to decide what the city wants to do in terms of this bridge over here on Beach Street. Now, the bridge is structurally sound, but it's unsafe due to walking and car accidents. To get a bridge repaired, it'd be about $800,000. To get a new bridge would be a million plus. With a new bridge, you'd be talking about sidewalks on it, even a bicycle area. It'd be nice. This money that's been released by the federal government, $500 million for all 50 states and any territories, as we talked before, they want stuff in the dark vice, so they can put a fast track on. We, Jim and I, we're trying to figure out why... We've talked about this bridge for some time. And when this came out, we took a pretty good look at it. Now, the pluses is, is we've got a chance to get it. If we do... If we pay $12,000 for an application and maybe $30,000, $40,000 for engineering, we've got an engineering company says they can do it. They've had experience in it. We would have to come up to $45,000, taking a change that our application is good enough and we would be approved. And nobody... I've had some people say, "Call this, we call that." Nobody can tell us what our chances are. I feel like, I've worked in grants a long time. I feel like this has probably got a good change, but it may not work through. Then you spent $40,000, $50,000. It's just layer and it's gone away. The good part is, you've still got these plans for the future. Should there ever be any more stimulus funding, which probably won't be, but if someday you had to pay it out of a general fund, you've got these set of plans that you can go with. This thing is just thick. And I've been asked, "Could you apply for anything else?" Well, not really. Some of the big cities apply for railroad, fast buses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Only thing I can think of is, that's really neat is this out here. Decision y'all have to make is a change. To spend this kind of money and still not know whether we want to be approved or not. And certainly, no one in this room can say that we will or we won't. Reed, you got any other comments?
No, I guess I went back to when we did Aspen Street, you know, when we did that a few years ago. And I think it's kind of similar. I think there was some grant money involved. And that's the reason I want to advise the adjournment sessions because that one got out of hand. And I think you have to take that into consideration. I don't think we really know how much it's going to cost. And Jim, would you have an idea? Did the engineer give you any kind of idea or ballpark on any type of estimate as to the cost of this thing?
On the cost of the bridge?
Yes.
It would be a little over a million dollars. Of course, on this grant, and here again, this is a totally different type of grant than what we had on Aspen Street. The minimum on this grant would be a million dollars. So you're looking at, and here again, you can add or take away features of that bridge and still make it come into, fit all the criteria for the grant. And bring it in, say 100, I mean a million, 100, something like that. So we're looking at a million and 100,000 to 200,000, depending on the features. And here again, when he gets into the design and estimated cost, he can come back to us and say, "Do you want to add this or take this away to make it fit the criteria and the price?"
Yeah, and I hear you're correct that our match would be... We could pick our match or...
Yeah.
Is that part of the application? We could... We had better chance if the better or greater our match was? Was that I understanding the same way?
If you have two grants, two applicants that are identical in every way, and this is just a scenario. One of them offers to give a 10% match. The other one offers to match 20%. It's not hard to figure out who's going to get the grant. So the more you agree to match on the front end, of course, that ups your cost. But the more you're willing to match on the front end, does increase your chance. So if y'all agree, there's two or three things here. First, do you want to go for it? Are you willing to stick your neck out and spend this money? Another thing, if you do, then you need to decide the features on the bridge, how much you're willing to put into it matching funds if you get it. Those things need to be considered. But there's no point in talking about the features or the matching if you're not willing to reach out for it. Well, yeah, the matching would come into, I guess, your decision as to whether you want to venture for it.
Who come up with the 28?
About all the other grants are 28 that we've gotten.
But that doesn't have anything to do with this? What... Does this grant here say 28?
No.
It doesn't say anything?
No. You can apply as far as that goes. You can apply for 100% funding. Of course, the people that are willing to put 10% or 20% of their own money are going to beat you out, you know?
But it's still going to cost us 47,000 either way?
Yeah.
Okay.
But Jim, if I understood, did I understand you right Tuesday night? It costs 10,000 or 12,000 dollars. It costs 5,000 for the application, was that what it was?
No. The pre-application, which all that does is put your name in the hat and tell the people that you are going to apply. That doesn't cost anything.
All right, that doesn't cost anything.
Right.
Give me the...
Then...
Go down that list again, let me understand.
The application itself is 10,000 to 12,000 dollars.
Okay.
The engineering fees, which includes design, cost estimate, shovel ready, is 30 to 35. So here's where you're getting the 40 to 47,000 combined of those two.
Now, did you... Did we not... Was it not said the other night that the 30 to 35 engineering fee could be taken out of the grant money? And that 10,000 to 12,000 is all that we could possibly lose in this?
Well, no. The 10 to 12 that you spend to apply for the grant?
Who gets that?
Is gone. You know, win or lose. Win or lose.
So we're going to use 12,000 if we decide to do this and we don't get it back?
Right.
Okay, now go ahead and go ahead.
Where the 30 to 35 comes in, if you don't get the grant this time, the next time it comes up, you have already spent that 30 to 35, which all you do is reach and get your plans off the shelf and say, "We're ready."
We own the plans, is what it is?
Yeah, we own the plans.
We can use them for whatever you want to do.
And since we don't have plans now, then you know, we're a step behind already.
Right.
Can the 30 to 35,000 be kind of part of our match if we did get the grant?
That is plenty. I would not count on it.
I thought he said no.
Well, he did, but he called me back today and said he might have found a loophole, but not to count on it. So that's kind of iffy right now, it's a gray area.
Did I misunderstand something he was talking about? I thought he said something about the application fee. What... It's not due on the front end. It's not due on the pre-application. It's only due in the March 20th.
The pre-application, they start taking applications, the 20th is on Monday or... The... No. They start taking applications on the 13th. The deadline is the 20th for the pre-application, which is just put your name and hat and tell them we are going to apply. They start accepting applications the 22nd of February. The deadline for the completed application, engineering everything, is March 19th.
And I think he also said that the engineering, that figure was for a, what I'm going to call Cadillac plan, meaning I think it was, we could scale that down if we chose to do so. But they... He felt that our chances for the grant and getting the grant, if it was a better plan or had the details and it would best be served by doing that and our chances of getting a grant would be better, is that correct?
Some of the items that they look for is, how does this affect the future? Will give priority to projects that have a significant impact on desirable long-term outcomes? Well, that's one thing. Then they look at state of good repair, improving the condition of existing transportation facilities and systems with particular emphasis on projects that minimize lifestyle costs, all of that. Another, they look at economic competitiveness. Does this contribute to the economic competence of the United States over the medium of the long term? So I doubt that. Livability. These are some of the characteristics they're looking for. Forstering livable communities through policies and investments that increase transportation choices and access to transportation services for people in the communities across the United States. Another, environmental sustainability. Improving energy efficiency, reducing dependence on oil, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and benefiting the environment. When I say it's benefiting the environment. Safety, this is our big one. Improving the safety of U.S. transportation facilities and systems. And another, another big, job creation and near-term economic activity. Job creation and near-term economic activity remain top priority in this administration. Therefore, we will give priority to projects that are expected to quickly create and preserve jobs and promote rapid increase in economic activity. Particularly jobs and activities that benefit economically distressed areas as defined in sections, so on, so on, so on, so on. So I've set in on a few of these things where we... Nothing this big, but we evaluate grant application. And they look at all these things and if you've got good engineering, you've got cooperation, and you've got... You meet some of these specs, you'll probably get it. If you go any of your left... If you've left off economic impact, you won't get it, you know? I'm trying to visualize this with the bridge. I do think it meets some of these things.
It meets several, yeah.
So I just wanted to bring you up to date on some of the things these people be looking at. Bottom line is, they want it fast because... Let's face it, you know, the president's election is in November and they've been wanting to move this to stimulate the economy, give people work, et cetera.
Kate, you mentioned... Or you mentioned that that bridge was structurally sound, right?
On my opinion, the reason I said that is because we don't... DOT does not send us a list of bridges that's under...
The reason I ask that, somewhere in the past, I have heard that T-Dog or somebody did an evaluation of that bridge and that it was the worst bridge in the city, unsafe wise. I mean, structurally, I don't know. Does anybody know about that?
I've heard of you, Jim. I would have got it later, I've not heard of it.
That bridge is not in danger of falling. It is structurally sound at present. They do, they did evaluate the bridge. They strongly recommend at minimum doing repairs. At minimum doing repairs. Now, read back to your question. What he was talking about, you can do a preliminary engineering for less money. If you submit a preliminary engineering with your grant, it greatly decreases your chance to get it. The completed engineering, which is ready to say, "This is it." It's ready to go to bed. You don't have to do anything else.
That's what they're looking for.
That's what they're looking for. Now, you can get a preliminary engineering for half the month, but it won't carry much waste when you go to them with your project. So that's what he had referenced.
Well, I know that... I'll throw this in, and I know that, you know, we're dealing with taxpayers' money. You know, but I would dare to say that in the past, city councils have probably wasted more money than we're talking about doing right here. We have an opportunity to get a grant. If we get in on the front end of it, it greatly increases our opportunity to get that grant. Eventually, we're going to have to build that bridge. I mean, you know, I... Everybody, a lot of people play the lottery. I don't, but I mean, I can see... I can see us taking a change, but I think it's a good change. That's just my opinion.
But they usually rate the grants... I know they do CUBG on a point system. And they have a list of things that they use... That they rate points on each line item. The more you put into it, the more points you're going to get. And then they total the points up usually. I'm not sure if they're going to do the stimulants that way, but that's the way they do most of them. And then whoever gets the most points is first on the list and then they total the money up that you've asked for and draw a line. If you're above the line, you get funded. If you don't, if you're below the line, you don't get funded. So if you're going to apply for it, you need to get the most points that you can get.
So basically, they need to decide, I guess, what's your contribution going to be? You want to go forward with it?
You need a motion? I'm ready to give you a motion. Is there any more questions? Jim, you got anything?
No, I just know, you know, the bridge is probably structurally safe, but you know, as far as the pedestrian part of it, the walkway and stuff, you know, it's a safety hazard. We had talked about, you know, addressing that a while back and put another walkway across from it. You know, that might help sell the grant, you know, it's a safety hazard for pedestrian walkways.
Especially with the new walking trail timed together. Especially with the new walking trail tied together, it's happening.
Jim, let me ask you, since Jason's not here tonight, I was asked by some merchants, when they, if we do get that bridge, will they close this whole bridge off? Are we gonna try to use, the whole thing will be shut down?
The most economical way to build it is to tear it down and start over.
That's what I want.
So we would have Beet Street closed right there during construction, yes.
It'd kind of make a hardship on the fire department.
Hey, we can have that if we get the money.
They would make a hardship.
We'd have to work around it.
Yeah. But you have a motion?
Another thing, I don't know whether you consider it. One of these days, the buildup, I don't know if any of you have ever been under it, but one of these days, that buildup is gonna have to be replaced. Well, the present Beet Street Bridge, if we had to turn all this traffic either to Aspen Street Bridge or Beet Street Bridge, what kind of fiasco would we have? I mean, that's somewhere out in the future. If you had a wide bridge that would accommodate traffic and pedestrians, how much better off would you be when that time comes? That's something else you might want to think.
One of these days, Jim, every bridge we've got today will have to be replaced if time, if time lasts long enough.
But, uh, that, that buildup, I'd be in under it. And it's.
Harry?
Got some damage. It's not, it's, it's not Harry, it's not her fault. I don't think tonight's part of an earthquake. But, uh, it's not a.
If it's an earthquake, I wouldn't be under it.
No, no, definitely not.
Is there anything else? Ask if you want to make a motion, or?
I'll make a motion that we go ahead with this and take a change on it. And not to exceed, maybe a eighty, uh, to exceed eighty, twenty.
Okay.
And not to exceed fifty thousand upfront.
Okay.
Ask for a state of true motion.
Thank you, sir.
Have a motion, a second. Can you call the road to it?
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mr. Keats?
Yes.
Motion carries. This means a adjournment.
I heard.
Thank you.
Before we go, uh, we've got another issue.
Project.
Project out at the, uh, corner market out there with our storm drain. I think we need to get Mr. Ballinger's attitude to work with the property owners and stuff out there, work something out, and see how he's gonna go about fixing it. And then he can get Terry and they work out the funding and stuff for it.
Steve, are you aware of what's going on at their thirteenth street section?
No.
Wayne, you aware of it?
I've heard a lot of that.
Jim, want you to get, explain if you're here?
I didn't know it was that, it didn't make me that.
Jim, I was just gonna say.
The drainage structure that comes down through that area goes under the building where Big Al's business for his porta potty business is, is failing. One proposal, well, there's two options. One was to build a concrete box cover, which would be T-Dot spec. You're talking about a lot of money. The other proposal was to go between that building and Miller Towing Building with a metal cover, the same size or same capacity as what's under the foreland. Uh, come down between those buildings, then come down parallel to Thirteenth Street and tie into the T-Dot box cover that goes under the foreland. This is probably the most reasonable and feasible. You're looking at a fraction of the cost. To be fair, in negotiating with the property owners, if we can, I'd rather not mention numbers right now. And Cage, if, Cage and I, if it's your pleasure. Cage and I could go talk to them, feel them out, see if they're willing to go share part of the cost with us, and, uh, just get a feel for it, see how they feel about this proposal. And, uh, I have a rough number in my head, but like I said, I'd rather not. It, this is not the appropriate time to talk about money. So if it's players at the council, with Cage's consent, he and I will meet with them in the, when we can get them together, when we can get together to get them, one, probably one at a time, not necessarily together. But talk to the property owners involved, see how they respond to this proposal. See if they're willing to go in a cost share basis. So I think that's what we're, probably the best solution to the problem.
Thank you, and sign off on something, Jim goes up, I find my mistake. But, and that, exact same area, we did something and asked somebody to reimburse us, uh, they eventually didn't do it.
Collo Davidson, he, he died, oldest. I did.
I, I think it's.
He wasn't him? Well, that's, that's, that's Collo's son's wife.
Right.
Collo's daughter, I believe.
Anyway, we'll just get them in our eye.
Okay.
You remember that?
Mayor, I'll make that the motion.
I'll say it.
In a twenty.
I have a motion, a second, call them.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mr. Keats?
Yes.
Motion carries. Jim, thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a motion to adjourn.
So am I.